That's close enough for rock and roll, right? Are we live? Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the November 3rd, 2022 regular board meeting of the school district of Haverford Township to order. If we could all rise for the pledge, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to take a minute at the start of the meeting to say that I'm almost 70 years old and I don't ever remember having an opportunity to say that the Philadelphia Eagles are 7-0 and the Phillies are playing in the World Series. Those two things are competing with the board meeting this evening. And I also just want to give a shout out to the Philadelphia Union because they're in the finals on Saturday, so it's a great time to be a Philly sports fan. Martha, could you call the roll, please?
Dr. Crispin, here. Dr. King?
Here.
Dr. Larson?
Here.
Dr. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Vitale?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Ms. Wedeman is traveling, so I'm chairing the meeting this evening. I'll accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the October 20th, 2022 regular public board meeting.
Crispin moved.
Snodgrass second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Want to introduce our two new student reps this evening from the middle school. We have Sarah Brown and from the high school, Erin Coyle. So, welcome both. We look forward to hearing your reports throughout the rest of the school year. So, Sarah, would you like to start out?
This week marks the conclusion of the fall sports season. This week, all of our teams are competing and enjoying outstanding seasons. There are some unbeaten teams and they are really grateful and for the opportunity to compete this season. There'll be a meeting regarding winter sports on November 16th at 2:45 PM in the auditorium. The student-led conferences are coming up. We have been getting ready for them. In the coming weeks, we will devote our time to prepare for our family conferences. There'll be a holding, they'll be holding the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd of November are slated to be dedicated for student-led conferences. The first marking period is nearly over, if you can even believe it. On Friday, November 11th, the first marking period concludes. On Friday, November 11th, we will honor veterans on Veterans Day. First, we would like to acknowledge and thank members of our community who have served in the armed forces. Second, we are participating in the Wounded Warrior Project's burpees for veterans challenge. Some employees and students committed to performing 830 burpees, which are about 28 per day throughout the month of November. Additionally, we would make a contribution to the Wounded Warrior Project during the week beginning of November 14th. We will be celebrating American Education Week, and we cannot wait. On November, on Friday, November 18th, we will be bringing our families to school so that we can observe one of our classes.
Great, thank you. Did you say 830?
Mm-hmm.
That's a lot. Okay, Erin?
Good evening, and thank you for presenting me with this platform to speak. Since this is my first meeting, I'm going to give a little introduction about myself. So, my name's Erin Coyle, and I'm a junior, a part of the class of 2024 at Haverford. I'm a member of many clubs at the school. I like to be very involved, so I'm a part of National Honor Society, Science Academy, Haverford Against Hunger, and Student Senate. I also play varsity field hockey for the school, and I also play field hockey outside of the school for club. I also do a large variety of other sports, such as Gaelic football, komogi, and I Irish dance for the McDay Cara School. I'm very involved in sports, so I always enjoy watching Haverford sports teams succeed. Girls soccer, girls volleyball, and girls field hockey all advanced to the first round of District One playoffs. Girls soccer lost in the 105th minute of double overtime, where they fought a very tough battle. It was a very exciting game to watch. Girls volleyball played Preakyomen Valley and lost all three sets. They were right behind in the battle, though, as they only lost by two points in each set, keeping the game very exciting and close. Girls field hockey also lost in a tough matchup against Boyer Town. The team put forth their best effort and played hard until the very last minute. These teams' successful seasons have come to an end, but the student athletes are continuing to work throughout their offseason on their fitness and skills. The cross-country team has had a very successful season this year and will be attending the state championships at Hershey tomorrow, November 4th. For the second year in a row, both the girls and boys' cross-country teams have qualified for the state championships. Haverford is the only school in District One to have both teams qualify, which is amazing. Haverford has four athletes ranked in the top 10 in the state so far, and 10 athletes did perform at the district championships. The sports that are preparing for their upcoming seasons are utilizing the amazing space and staff that the school offers with the new fitness room. I'm very excited to join these workouts because I can stay connected with my team while also staying active when I cannot play field hockey outside. With the great leadership of the coaches and collaboration of the students, Haverford's athletics are now becoming stronger than ever. The fall play honk performed between the dates of October 27th to the 29th. The play had one performance on the 27th, one on the 28th, and two on the 29th. The casting crew put forth their best effort and time to ensure that the play had an amazing performance. The production was so cute and loved by all ages, and it was amazing to see the performance all put together. The school held a wellness day on October 28th, where students were able to decide how they would like to spend the day. Students had numerous choices when it came down to deciding what activity they wanted to participate in. I chose Ultimate Frisbee, and it was so fun with all my friends getting outside. The weather was so nice, so I really enjoyed it. My older sister, on the other hand, chose pumpkin painting, so she's very creative, and she painted her pumpkin as the poison apple from Snow White, much more creative than I could ever be, so I applaud her. Student Senate's yearly blood drive was hosted in the gym on October 27th. This event was a huge success among students and staff who were so willing to participate. We had 100 students sign up to donate blood, and so many more signed up to run the event. The senior class of 2023 hosted a Halloween carnival night for all the children in the community ages 5 to 10. This event was run by both students of the senior class and other members of the school who were very willing to donate their time, and this was a great way to connect with the younger students in the community. The first academic quarter is coming to an end as of tomorrow. It's weird to think that we're already a quarter of the year done. Even though my classes don't change, I'm very excited for a fresh start. One highlight of my classes is I'm currently taking AP Chemistry, where we have been testing the concentration of vitamin C in orange juice through a titration lab. It's been very exciting. I love science, so it's always very exciting for me. I'm excited for upcoming events such as the Homecoming Dance and Discover Day. These events will happen on November 5th and November 18th. Discover Day is where elementary school students can go room to room and be inspired by countless STEM activities. I will be helping to run a room with the Club Teens of Future Medicine, where I'll be holding a simple demonstration for how blood pumps through the body, while also providing kids with the opportunity to make their own DIY lungs. I cannot wait for all the exciting activities to come in the second quarter, and thank you for allowing me to present some highlights of HHS and GoForwards.
Great, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is superintendent's comments. Jen?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. So, I am very pleased to congratulate Senior Nicholas Borghese for qualifying for the NAFME All-National Honor Choir. Nicholas scored high enough at All States last semester in the spring to qualify for this incredible choir, so he will be performing with other members of this all-national choir in Baltimore next week. And I'd like to just congratulate his music teachers that he has had throughout the year, of course, his family and all of his supporters, and just make a special mention of Ms. Kelsey Handler, who has been working with him last year and this year and has accompanied him to the performances, and we're just so excited for him, and it's quite an honor to make the national level, so congratulations to Nicholas. As we heard Erin mention, Discover Day, a community favorite, is back. It will be hosted by our high school Science Academy, our Science Department, and really run by students, and it's coming up this Saturday. It is from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's free of charge, right? It's been advertised to our elementary families through our principal publications, but please, anyone in the community is welcome to come out. It's a very exciting day. There are dozens of offerings, all STEM-related, all hands-on, so much fun. Kids leave with takeaways, and it's just such a wonderful experience to see our older students teaching our younger students and sharing their passion for science, and we're all very much looking forward to that, and we hope to see everybody there. And now, it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Christina Carter. She is our Director of Learning and Assessment, and she is actually here to make another introduction of two students from Haverford High School who participated in a summit called "The Big Thing: A Summit to Change Young Lives." So, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Carter, to tell us a little bit more.
Hi, good evening to members of the board. So, I have the honor of introducing two amazing seniors at our high school who, as you just heard, had the opportunity to attend the Big Things Summit. It was at the Convention Center downtown with people from all across the county and the area, students, teachers, other educators, administrators, policymakers, and they were able to go and learn about how to advocate for education and things that they're passionate about along the way. So, the two ladies that got to attend, first I have Mrs. Jean, well, Ms. Jean Park. She has been in our district from kindergarten through 12th grade, so she's been with us a long time. She attended Lynnwood and through the middle school and high school. She's currently applying to many colleges, of course, in her senior year, and she's looking to go into communications, which makes a lot of sense with advocacy. Also, who will be first up to speak will be, hope I say it right, Melena? Melena DuKabeer. She has attended the district from 1st through 12th grade. She went to Chestnut Wald and then to our middle and high school. She, too, is applying to colleges, although she is undecided right now. She really has an idea of what she wants to do, looking at marketing, but she made it very clear she only wants to work for good organizations, so nonprofits and other organizations that do good things for the world. So, I'll let these ladies really speak to you about what the event was all about and some takeaways that they have from it.
Hi, I'm Melena, as she introduced. Thank you so much for having us here to talk about this opportunity. It was really grateful to be able to go and learn and then to bring it to all of you. Such a great opportunity, so thank you for that. We attended this event called "The Big Thing: A Summit to Change Young Lives." It was a two-day conference at the end of September in Philadelphia, and there were different sessions and meetings within the conference that talked about career technical education, mental health, and diversity, equity, and inclusion within primarily high schools with the ultimate goal of making the optimal school environment where students can thrive. And a lot of the people who attended the conference were actually teachers and school administrators, and then there were also some other students from the surrounding areas. This was actually really intimidating for me. I was super nervous that there were so many adults because I was worried that I wouldn't be able to connect with them and that the information presented at the conference would be kind of irrelevant to me, but I was totally wrong. So, at the end, I really enjoyed being able to hear the teacher perspective because it was really reassuring to know that there are adults in my surrounding area who are working towards the same goals within the schools. Just having that sort of support from someone who does have more ability to do things within the system was really reassuring and inspiring to me. And it also was nice to know that there are good things happening behind the scenes that I don't always see when I'm sitting in the classroom learning about anatomy or English. I'm not knowing about all the other things that my teachers are doing behind the scenes. And it did really help to sort of break barriers and connect with teachers because sometimes when you're in school, you're thinking so much about the content that you sort of forget that your teacher's a person, too, and they're working on their own things. So, sort of being able to find things that we could work on together was really interesting and finding ways that we could work together to reach those goals mentioned was really inspiring. And because the conference was geared toward teachers, I learned so many things that were sort of teacher-oriented that as a student, if it had only been for students, I probably wouldn't have learned. For example, one guy was talking about sort of healing in schools and how students and teachers can connect to sort of support students, especially in some of the schools that we were talking about, like experienced a lot more violence than we do at Haverford, so it wasn't necessarily totally connecting to us, but it was just interesting to hear how helping students and teachers can connect in such a way that can really help students thrive in their environment beyond just academics. And something we talked about is that part of doing that would mean having a more diverse faculty so that students can see themselves represented and have someone that they can connect with. And in the end, I think that seeing all these teachers and students connecting really made me hope that more students, especially younger students, who can take this on throughout their whole high school experience, and also more faculty who are going to be here for a long time, attend these sorts of events because I do think it would be really beneficial, and it was such a great experience, so thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Jean Park, a current senior at the high school. Thank you for inviting me tonight to discuss what I've learned at the Big Things Summit. This conference took place over two days in Philadelphia, and Melena and I were surrounded by adults whose goal was to increase teacher and staff diversity in schools, specifically in Pennsylvania. We listened to professional experts on this topic, went to breakout room discussions to further discuss specific points, and engaged with participants to learn about each person's experience. Of course, there was a delicious dessert to refresh after heavy discussions. I learned why it was important to increase diversity. First, it provides role models for students of color, and as Melena pointed out earlier, it promotes better mental health and emotional support for students. Seeing someone like you be able to become a teacher or administrator encourages students to do better in school. But I would like to emphasize that having a diverse school is important for everyone. We live in an ever-changing society, so it is imperative to increase diversity, to expose students to different cultures, and increase their understanding of others. Our school should educate students to reflect our society. The goal of education is not only to enhance academic performance, but for students, to prepare students for the globalized, international world. Growing up, I've had only two teachers of color since I've been a part of the school district since kindergarten. I've never had a teacher of Asian descent or someone who looked like me. Because of my personal experience, this topic has been something that I've been very passionate about. However, I'm sure that this situation applies to many minority students. As co-president of No Place for Hate, my goal has been to promote inclusivity throughout the high school. With the rise of Asian hate crimes during COVID, I organized the Stop Asian Hate Walk in May of 2021 and once again in 2022. Student speakers spoke at this walk, and at the end, students ornamented a big poster with what Haverford could do to help the Asian-American community. One repeating idea was an Asian-American Pacific Islander, AAPI, Studies class, which is exactly what I'm doing today. I'm currently working with the principal to create an AAPI Studies class, the first in our district. I hope that this class will highlight the contribution of Asian-Americans to the United States through their hard work and resistance against stereotypes and discrimination. Furthermore, we will learn about the diversity within the Asian-American community, which people often treat as just one group. However, Asian-Americans are so diverse in terms of history, country of origin, language, culture, and socioeconomic condition. Again, I would like to emphasize that this class will not only be for Asian-American students, but for all students. By having this class, our school can better prepare every student for our diverse and inclusive society. Thank you.
And if I, if I could just add to what we've heard here from our students, the proposal of that course has not only had an influence, by our own students, has not only had an influence on us, but we have reached out to other schools in the area and are currently connecting with other schools in districts across the county to work together, to look at what a course like an AAPI course could look like, how is it studied at the college level, what kinds of things can we look for. So, you may have sparked something that's sort of county-wide, not only here. So, it will take us a little while to get that course together, but we do appreciate the student voice and all that you've done. So, thank you both for your contributions this evening and for your longer-lasting contributions as well.
Thank you both for attending the meeting and for bringing it back to us. Thanks very much. Next item on our agenda is public comment for items on the agenda, and no one has signed up to speak regarding items on the agenda this evening. Next agenda item is committee reports, and we have Curriculum and Pupil Services. Laura Crispin.
Great, thanks. So, our curriculum committee met last Thursday. The bulk of our meeting was about the recent enrollment report as of October 1st. Currently, the total enrollment in our district is 6,642 students as of October 1st. At the elementary level, there are 2,993 students. There were some comparisons. We had the recent demography study done. The demographer projected 3,218, so there is a pretty significant difference between the actual enrollment and the projected enrollment, and the differences are largely at the kindergarten and the first-grade level. Haverford Online enrollments at the elementary level are back to pre-pandemic levels. Charter school enrollments are slightly lower than pre-pandemic levels. At the middle school, the actual enrollment is 1,627, which is very close to the projected enrollment, and it's up slightly from last year. At the high school, the actual enrollment is 2,007 students, which is very close to the projected enrollment and also up slightly from last year. Much more detail was given in the presentation, so if anybody's interested in those specifics, I definitely encourage you to watch the recording on YouTube on the district's channel. There was also a discussion about the Preparing Contemporary Citizens Curriculum Review Process. An overview was given. In the review cycle, where we typically would be now, has been paused so that the curriculum review can incorporate ways to infuse the goal of preparing contemporary citizens into all subjects and grade levels. The goal is to modernize and expand assessment opportunities to prepare citizens for a contemporary world while maintaining current assessment practices. There's an action plan that includes internal and external audit, focus groups, gap analysis, and plan development with periodic updates to the board and the public. Some ideas for exploration include project-based learning, authentic task performance, and design-thinking projects. There were also two information items presented. One is for vote tonight, the CCIU Support of Special Education and Curriculum Review. That is in support of the district's audit of the Life Skills Program and the Gifted Program. And then, based on Dr. Rucci's comments at our last public board meeting, there has been, since then, a minimal response to the need for a Latin teacher. And Dr. Rucci mentioned in our last public business meeting that the district has been reaching out to find a Latin teacher. Many districts in the area have dropped Latin. At the state level, very few certifications have been given for Latin teachers throughout Pennsylvania, so there's just really not a lot of teachers teaching Latin. It is very likely the case that Latin one, excuse me, that Latin one will not be offered going forward if they're not able to find a teacher, and the district will plan for how to teach out the Latin curriculum to the students who are currently enrolled in Latin. So, again, all the details can be found in the recording of our meeting from last week, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crispin. Next item is bill lists. I'll accept the motion to approve dispersments from the general fund totaling $218,299.45.
Crispin, move.
First and second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve a contract agreement with Robert Half-Talent Solutions.
Snodgrass moved. Crispin, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the following resignations as listed.
King moved.
Tward second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the following appointments as listed, contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act 168 of 2014.
Crispin moved.
McKay, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the following non-acceptance of appointment.
Snodgrass moved.
Vitale, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the following leave request.
Crispin moved.
Snodgrass, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the following educational service contracts for services provided to the district.
King moved.
Crispin, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is policy.
I think you missed one of the pupil services.
Education service contracts.
Sorry.
Educational service agreement. It's A.
A.
Right.
A.
You missed A or B?
A.
It did be.
Yep, it did be.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'll accept the motion to approve the following educational service agreement for a district student. The agreement covers reimbursement for educational services for school years as listed.
McKay moved.
Snodgrass, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for helping out there. Next item on the agenda is policy. Antoinette?
Sure. I move to table Policy 006.1 until our next meeting. For a second?
Short second?
Sure, a second.
Our solicitor is not here today. He was suddenly absent, and so we could not have a representative from our solicitor here, since they are usually part of the discussion, the ongoing discussion of policy, both at the committee level and at the board level. We thought that it would be better and we could have a more robust, efficient discussion of these policies at our next meeting. So, I move to table this one. That's what's up for now, and then I'm going to move to table the other ones, too.
Okay, so we have a move in second on A. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy 6.1 is tabled. Antoinette?
I move to table Policy 200, Enrollment of Students and 200 AR.
Vitale, second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy 200 is tabled. Antoinette?
I move to table Policy 201, Admission of Students and 201 AR.
McKay, second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy 201 is also tabled, and we'll be bringing these back. Next item on the agenda is public comment for other items that were not on the agenda. One speaker has signed up. Stacy Kaiser-Tomaschek. Stacy?
Hi. My name is Stacy Tomaszek. I'm a resident of the district. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to make this comment. I'm here tonight to express support for making the school district's calendar more inclusive by observing popular holidays such as Eid, Diwali, Chinese New Year. As soon as I saw this petition in my email, it made sense to me. Our community is growing, and so is its diversity. Over the summer, I had two families move on either side of me, and both are young families and both have parents born outside of this country. And one of them shared their amazing home-made meal from their Eid celebration. It was delicious, and I'm embarrassed to admit that I didn't even know Eid was a holiday until last year. And I consider myself pretty globally aware, but obviously, there's a big gap there. I don't know a lot of things. There's also at Costco recently, there are enormous displays of fireworks in October, and I was confused, like, what is going on? I didn't realize that people who celebrate Diwali do so with dazzling lights, such as fireworks. I didn't know that, and I have very close friends in the Indian community, and I still didn't know that. But the world, this is the world, and I love what I'm learning, and I love the community that is around me, and I look forward to learning more. And I know so many of our community members of all backgrounds and beliefs also are thrilled to embrace our community's diversity and celebrate with them. And I think making these changes to the calendar falls in line with the district's commitment to our children's sense of belonging and embracing all of their socio-cultural identities. I mean, everywhere you look, it's talking about diversity, inclusion, embracing our diversity and celebrating it. And I thank you, all of you, for your commitment to that because it's evident in the things that you support and the decisions you make. So, I just ask the school district to look at the community, talk to the community, and consider making these changes. Thanks.
Thank you. Board reports. Dave?
First pitch is in about five minutes. We'll pass.
No pressure. Dr. King? Dr. King.
I mean, I feel obligated.
No, you, I wasn't saying whatever.
I am, well. I guess I'm passing as well.
How, how mad would you be if I brought out a copy of Grapes of Wrath?
I just, I wanted to just reiterate, Discover Day is Saturday. It's awesome. The students put so much work into it, the teachers put so much work into it, and it's super, super fun. I will be there. Um, I hope other people come out, and with that, I will say, on to the next board report.
No report.
Okay, I will spare you all the details, but um DCIU held its um November meeting yesterday evening. Um, I will share that um the board approved the comprehensive plan. I will not read you all the details of the four strategic areas, but in brief, they are um a goal of standards-aligned curriculum for K-12 math and language arts, um support and services for students' complex behavioral and mental health needs, um hiring and retention strategies um to hire and retain highly qualified staff at the IU, um and also the establishment of a new administrator academy um to develop strong leaders. And I will give more details in my next report next time we meet. Go Phils. I have two screens set up for me at home, so no report for Golden Village.
Um, yeah, just really briefly, um, I know Erin covered it really well, but um I was able to go see Honk, um, the, the musical with my two daughters, and we just had a blast. It was really fun. Um, so I just say congratulations and a really great job to uh everyone who was involved. Um, you know, everyone onstage, offstage. It was, it was a wonderful production. And then just really quickly, Election Day is on Tuesday, so please um go out and vote. Um, President Weedman is not here, but she always says that um just because the school board's not on the ballot doesn't mean that education's not. Um, so uh, you know, go out um and vote on Tuesday and look at the policies for education. It's obviously important um to us to have elected officials who support our schools and support public schools. So um I encourage everybody to go out and vote. Thanks.
Thanks, Antoinette. On uh Monday and Tuesday, I attended the uh Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators and Pennsylvania School Boards Association's uh School Leadership Conference. It's the first time that it's been held in person since before COVID. Uh, it was great to see uh so many folks from all over the state uh that I haven't seen uh in a few years. Uh, great slate of uh workshops and educational sessions. Um, uh, was time well spent. Uh, I'd just like to follow up on Antoinette's comment. And get out and vote, get your neighbors to vote, get your kids to vote. Um, it's a big election. And uh with that, uh, the next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on November seventeenth at seven thirty PM in the boardroom of the Oakmont Administration Building. And with that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Vitali, move.
Second.
Thanks, everybody.
Big record.